Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 28th, 2017 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is called to order. Our meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV. It is also being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the central liberty and justice for all.
For correspondence this week, we have a memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis dated March 2nd, 2017 regarding the Student of the Month for February 2017. Those students, those Long Meadow students recognized and honored in February are Joshua Hebert for Culinary One and Kevin Gonzalez for Integrated Occupational Prep. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion, please, for the minutes?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes, the February 28th, 2017 school committee meeting as presented.
Second. Any changes on the minutes before we approve them? All those in favor?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. And opposed? No. Did everyone vote yes? So we have school committee announcements and recognitions. Any event announcements or recognitions? Are the students just, I don't know the name of the show that they were referring to, but I'd like to announce it. Does anyone remember?
The Schools Match Wits.
You meant the play?
The play, but also the Schools Match Wits.
And you'll probably talk about later, but Ties is tomorrow night, um, six to eight, so.
Six to eight for high school?
Yep, at the high school. There's a lot of stuff going on, really cool stuff.
Thursday, yeah.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Today's not Wednesday.
Today's Tuesday.
Yes, Thursday night, sorry.
No problem.
East 12.
Yeah, Ties is a great event. I really hope we get a good turnout this year. I'd love to see people come out. And it's also a great way for younger students in the school system to come and check out the high school and get a sense for the space. It's a really wonderful opportunity in that way as well, so looking forward to that.
And the play is?
Thanks, the show. What is it called?
I don't know off the top of my head. So it's being directed and it was written and directed by Shan Planky. She's a junior at Long Meadow High School. And it's about a boy who is applying to college and he realizes his outcomes if he gets into his top school or if he doesn't. So it'll be on, it'll be, it'll be free for students after school on Friday. And then there's a performance Friday at 7:00 and Saturday at 2:00.
Friday, this Friday at 7:00 PM and this Saturday at 2:00, okay. And then the Schools Match Wits also? Did you say, Michael?
I believe they won the competition.
It's going to be aired on, I think, April 15th.
That's exciting. Any other announced high school events that you want to?
Nothing major.
Okay. Graduation?
Yeah, graduation will be June 11.
And Diane, does the whole school committee attend graduation?
You'll be invited, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's Sunday, graduation?
Yeah, that's Sunday. I believe it's at 1:00 PM at Symphony Hall.
Why did they change that from the middle of the week? I know we used to have graduation on Sunday, but then we went to midweek.
I think they're having a challenge getting Symphony Hall where the midweek times with all the other high schools and colleges graduating, yeah. And then we didn't want to have it on Friday or Sabbath, and so that seemed to be the best day.
Saturday, yeah, the Sabbath on Saturday.
Friday night and Saturday, yeah.
So Marty, I should have announced at the beginning of the meeting, but I'll announce now that Dr. O'Shea is not here tonight, obviously, and Tom Maza is also not here tonight, so I guess that's all, say about that. We have Legislative, SEAL, Food Services, Energy Task Force, anything on those?
Um, I can give, um, let's see. Our Lower Pioneer Valley meeting was canceled because we didn't have a quorum, so we're just going to meet next, uh, next month. Um, for Energy Task Force, we're doing a lot of exciting things. One thing which will come, and I'm sorry I sent it out to you, but you can just ignore it for now, those goals. But basically, we came up with goals for the town side and the school side to reach and we'll get some funding from the town to reach those goals, but just to help with energy efficiency in the schools. And we earmarked two places where, that really need help. One was Center School. They have the lowest energy efficiency and they spent the most money on electric bills every year. And we believe that's due to the windows being single pane. And that's been an ongoing discussion for, I don't know, like, at least eight years now. So that's something that we wanted to work on for this year. It's been on capital planning a bunch of times and just never funded, just because it's so expensive. They have a lot of windows, they're in usual size. And the other was for the town side, the police station. That also is the, doesn't have great energy efficiency. So that's the two projects that we're going to work on. The other project we're working on is, we spent a lot of money for our town on the street lamps, about $700,000 a year in paying electric bills. So we have a couple ideas, but Eversource, the company that we pay the bills, too, they're being really difficult. And even if we tried to make the light bulbs LED or efficient, we still would be paying enormous amount of money. They won't give us a tariff for it. So we're trying to figure out a solution to come up with that. And that's it.
I know at one point you were talking about solar panels. I know the town has talked a lot, a lot about solar panel fields. I know we talked really briefly about canopy, you know, parking lot canopies. Is that something that the task force is still discussing for future planning or?
It is. We have, we have goals that we have to reach for the Green Communities Act, which we get money from the state for. So that's built in, and it's also a matter of getting everybody together. You know, we have to go out to bid for the solar panels. We really need to talk to Chad about that and have basically a group meeting for it. So it's on the horizon.
Okay. I just wondered if, I know the high school has been tossed around, the park, high school parking lot?
Yeah.
As a potential for canopies. I don't know. I would love to know if that's an option that could help.
Right.
Starting off at least with something, even if it's not a whole field.
Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm there with you.
Yeah. Thanks, Liz. I appreciate your work on that a lot. So SEAL, or Food Services, nothing this week?
No, Food Service has a meeting April 27th.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have subcommittee reports. First, we have the Finance Subcommittee.
Finance Subcommittee met on March 7th. We considered the following items and are bringing them forward to the committee for your review. School Choice 2017, 2018. This year, we accepted four students in kindergarten. The following motion is what was recommended by the Finance Subcommittee and the administrative team.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee and the administrative team that the school committee accept students in the School Choice program for the 2017, 2018 school year in the following grade levels and number of seats. Grade one would be four seats, grade three would be one seat, grade six one seat, grade eight one seat.
Second.
Okay, so let's have a discussion about School Choice for 2017, 18.
Would it help to read off of Marty's superintendent report? Because there was a lot of information that we talked about at the meeting, and I think maybe he summed it up here in the School Choice and Metco recommendation. Should we read that first?
Yeah, you can read, I mean, anything that would help.
The Finance Subcommittee acted favorably on the administration recommendation to offer four Metco places at kindergarten and seven School Choice placements. Four of the choice slots would be opened at grade one. The remaining three are proposed for grades three, six, and eight. It is likely that the four grade one slots would be open at Center School, but we can make final determination when our enrollment and registration patterns become clearer in the weeks and months ahead. Both recommendations represent an effort to sustain two important programs. Though LPS has enrolled new School Choice students in grade K in recent years, we are recommending opening slots at grade one where enrollment and class size is easier to forecast. I would also caution the school committee not to go beyond the seven choice seats we are recommending. While enrollment numbers and class size projections might suggest there is room at the elementary level in the coming year, we should avoid decisions that will dictate staffing levels and programming in the years ahead. At the middle school level, we will have little room at either Glenbrook or Williams. We have, yeah, LHS meanwhile, has expressed its concern about bringing students who haven't experienced Long Meadow's rich K-8 curriculum into a rigorous LHS program. In my view, a conservative strategic approach to choice will ensure that we do not negate the program's fiscal benefits. Additionally, we do not want to become too dependent on choice revenue as the state's political and fiscal commitment should, could shift in the years ahead. So that was from Marty.
I ask a question. So we have choice on the table. Can we discuss Metco along with it, or do, are we just limited to choice?
We should probably discuss Metco with the, with the other motion that deals with Metco.
Because I feel like they're both, we're both, we're talking about slots, so it's hard, I mean, they're two different programs, and for that we make separate discussions, but when we talk about slots and placement, they're, we have to talk about them both, I think, so I don't know.
So were you thinking about just globally, talking about the two?
Talking about the two, can we do that with it on the table? Do we take it off the table and just discuss School Choice and Metco? What's the best? I think, I think if we've just moved forward with a motion that's on the table, and then naturally, Metco will come up in terms of our discussion regarding numbers, which is fine. You know, I mean, there, it's impossible to talk about one and not reference the other. Yeah, I didn't know if we had to split them apart. Yeah. Okay. But I know what you're saying. I was thinking the same thing as we were reading through the motions, that logistically it's a little tricky, but we'll just try to make do.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Yeah, John seconded. So any discussion on choice, School Choice?
I think, so last year, we kind of talked about the Choice program, and I think it's something that we probably, both Metco and Choice, we should talk about more as far as the programs, the benefits, you know, who we're serving, are we doing a good job at it? I think the dilemma for this year is that, I think that's something that would have to go, should, really should go to the Finance Subcommittee early in the year as we want to look at this, which we can decide tonight, so that we could get the information together, who's ever on the Finance Committee next year, and try to come up with, where could we fit more kids? Because I think there, there might be opportunities to put more kids in in different grades. I just think the dilemma now to try and move the numbers is that we just haven't done that background work. And, you know, Michelle and I and Fitz on the Finance Subcommittee, we didn't really, I think there's a lot of issues with both programs, and I think we could probably make them both better. But I'm just not sure that for this coming year, I, you know, the numbers are maybe not exactly what we want, but it's, we haven't done any, any real research to figure out what to do that would be a better number. The Metco program in particular, I'm going to kind of go there anyway, but I think that's a program that we should look at, and maybe we should expand it. But for right now, the numbers that we came up with, you know, I'm comfortable with those because I know for sure that administration's comfortable with them. I'd be, I'm a little uncomfortable if we go drastically beyond those.
Michael, you had your hand up, and I didn't see your hand up.
Yeah, I just would, I know that you, the Finance Subcommittee reviewed this, and I appreciate the recommendation. And I agree with the recommendation. I'm just curious, you know, historically, or at least over the last eight to 10 years, we've accepted students primarily in K-1. Is, what was the reasoning rationale? What was the discussion like to talk about adding seats in six and eight, which, and three? And I have no issue with that, I just, I want to just kind of understand where it came from.
So we are allowed to give preference to siblings of people who are already in the Choice program?
Got it.
And we have students who are siblings and who are also children of employees at the upper levels, so.
Okay.
Does that make sense from a funding perspective?
Yeah, right.
So you're, we're bringing in the, although it could be brought in through the contract, we're bringing them in through Choice?
If we, if we can, so we'll do lottery, and if there's another sibling who gets in the lottery, then.
And was, and the lottery hasn't been drawn yet, correct?
No, actually, if there's only one that applies, there won't be a lottery. But if there are more than one, then there will.
Right. I think, also Marty and Tom noted that this, these grades make sense to add those seats. We have room in those grades, and it wouldn't affect staffing, so.
Okay.
Very specific.
Is there any concern, just, you know, obviously, Long Meadow has a level of academic rigor, and I know that in the past, whether correct or not, some of the rationale for limiting eighth grade and sixth grade?
So these kids are probably already here?
Okay.
We're hoping that they're already here, and that we'll just switch them over to Choice students as opposed to?
So we just charge it to a different, got it. Okay.
Contract kind of benefit.
Yep.
Stephanie? So another switch, too, was moving the kids to first grade versus kindergarten, and I was wondering what people thought about that.
Oh, yeah. I didn't care about that, that's a good point.
So I think, I liked the recommendation for first grade because it helped us have a better idea of what our enrollment pattern would be, whereas in kindergarten, we still don't have all the enrollments, and we don't know what we'll need for staffing. It's so unknown, whereas first grade, we have a better idea, especially now with full-day kindergarten, you know, how it would affect us from a staffing standpoint, so.
Because you're waiting for registrations to come in for kindergarten?
For kindergarten, yeah, we still don't, I mean, I think you get them all the way up until the end of August, right?
Oh, yeah. Right now, we've got 100 students registered. We have 150 on our list. We have 50 female students.
So parents to come and register.
I also have a.
Diane does a good job of tracking those parents.
I've got my secretaries calling parents.
We know you have a fire world.
I also have a philosophical question about the, what's the basis premise behind choice? Does anyone, you know, is it to offer the school to outside towns? What is the, what is the thinking behind choice? Because that will help me decide, you know, do we expand? Are we okay with the number? Kind of what are we trying to do here?
I mean, historically, I think, and maybe John can probably speak more to it, but I would, I think that like the program as a whole throughout the state exists to expand opportunities for students in either low-performing or, you know, in low-performing communities or in communities where the schools are not necessarily as safe or as, you know, well-maintained. I think most school districts offer it in one way or another. And, yeah, I think, I mean, I obviously, I think it's about giving parents the option to kind of place their children where they want to.
Well, essentially, that's.
Essentially, right.
What's, what, the genesis of this was, I think it was Governor Weld who started it, and it was one of these School Choice, give parents more choices, same kind of refrain you're getting on with charter schools.
Baby step towards vouchers.
It was really robbing Peter to pay Paul, to be frank. We were taking money that the state would have given to Springfield, for example, and giving it to Long Meadow in exchange for getting, say, six students from Springfield. And that was nice, and we were really tight on budget. And we also had a lot of room in Wolf Swamp Road School, for example, and we had room. Our peak enrollment, I think, was back in the late 70s, early 80s. This program came in in the late 80s, early 90s, if memory serves. But there was always a bit of, I thought, unfairness to it. You're taking from hard-pressed inner cities and holding up the illusion that you're going to get a better education out here. Well, you got a good education here, but you also could get a very good education in the Springfield school system. There's some really outstanding teachers in Springfield. I just throw that out as something to think about. There was a bit of self-serving on our part when we said we'd like to participate. It was the revenue.
I mean, the other added benefit, of course, is that we're exposing students to other students who have different experiences and different backgrounds.
And we're assuming that all Choice kids are Springfield, and they're not?
No, they're not. I mean, I graduated with kids from Agala and Southwood.
It was developed as a financial benefit to suburban districts.
Isn't that right?
It is mainly a financial program. And it's, it's, if you look at it on the DSE website, it's under finances. It's not under, you know.
You're right, it's under, meaning in underscore finance.
It's all under finances, that's why.
And that was the, when I was on the school committee a decade ago, that was the, the discussion was revenue generating, and we looked at how many slots we could make available and.
And get money.
That was the discuss, that was the basis for the discussion. And we get that money for each individual student, that $5,000. Is that come?
It's more than.
But in addition, right, to the money that you get per pupil, but then you get that $5,000 just because they're choice, is that right?
No, there's, it's a higher threshold. I, I can't quote the exact, Metco students, it's $5,000?
No, Choice is.
No, Choice is, I was, I think it's a little over five.
Yeah, I think it is. It's a little bit over, and then there's.
It's a per-pupil allotment, and then.
Right.
Anything additional above and beyond services that, that students might receive get billed back, like, to the sending district.
So my question is, how do those sending districts view choice? Do we know?
They're losing the chance.
They're losing.
Number of them, and they, like, you have East Hampton Public Schools or Ware, places like that, if they kept the choice monies, they would be so much better off. I mean, it would be ni, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars for those schools that are losing. Because, you know, we might pick off a few, and all the towns around them pick off a few, and next thing you know, you've got like 100 kids going away. So it's a, it's a big problem for those schools. And Springfield is leading money. Holyoke and Chickapiti, all those places are. So it's, it was supposed to be about, part of it was choice, but it's also competition. You know, so the theory behind it, and part of the theory behind it was, well, we're going to make the, the cities really try harder to keep those kids, to keep the money. But that's not what happened. What happened is, the money left, they had less chance to actually get better because they had less money to work with. So Metco is a different animal, but School Choice is, there's a definite downside to, not to Long Meadow, but there's downside to the schools that are sending their kids here. I mean, that's, that's a.
There was another factor in there, too. The parents of children who got into the School Choice program were more than likely to be the strongest advocates of public education in their district. And when their children left, then they no longer had much of an interest in what was going on. Except maybe a civil interest, but not the kind of, you know, deeply motivated because their child was involved, so.
It's often the worst students.
That was the effect of it, and it was.
It's often the best students do, because their parents are interested in how they're doing.
Yeah.
So you lose the scores. So it's like, there's a whole bunch of negative implications for the other school. The more we take, or any school takes, the harder it is for the other school.
So I was looking through historically what we've taken for Choice students, and it's gone down dramatically, and I think the high was 124 that I have for whatever this period is, the last 13 years or so.
Yeah, that's what I was.
And that was 120, 124, based on that sheet, and we're down to, for this year, we're down to 45. So I think it is that bigger question of what do we want to do about choice? And schools have changed, and maybe it's not a question we can answer now, but schools have changed. We have charters, we're increasing the number of charters, and we know issues that, you know, come up with that, and then we're potentially encountering vouchers. Maybe this is a discussion, you know, more globally for next year when we have a better sense of what's going on, but when we talk about choice and why we're offering it, if it is financially because of, you know, that incentive or otherwise, you know, we're taking money from districts, I don't.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, Jess and I talked about this a little bit earlier today, but I think there's, there would be some merit to telling the Finance Subcommittee, one of their charges would be for next year, and they could start it now, really looking carefully at the numbers in both programs, why we're doing it, how it's working. That might also involve Policy Subcommittee with Metco in particular, but, but anyway, doing some real research on it, because I'll fully admit that we didn't really, you know, we talked to administration, they gave us a recommendation, it seemed to make sense, but we didn't really look into Metco, and could we really add some more kids or not? We didn't, it was a brief conversation, really.
It was more about numbers and where they fit into our budget and, you know, staffing, but not about the concept of it.
Yeah, I think maybe for next year, it is that question of why are we doing it? Where are the kids coming from? Are they actually coming from low-performing schools? Are we offering a service? Are we doing this for, you know, the revenue? Just some questions, I think, that are worth thinking about when we decide what to do with it in the future. The teacher contract piece of it, though, I think remains, unless that's changed, but. Liz? I just wondered, so if, let's say we didn't do School Choice, then these kids would perhaps go to a charter school? And then Massachusetts would be losing the money anyway, so, in terms of financially? Yeah, I know. And then if you have vouchers, it could go, I, yeah, that's why I thought maybe next year's a better year to really think about where we're at and where we're. Yeah, I think like Ron said, and you're saying it's important because both Metco and Choice are policy decisions for school committees, for local school committees to make, so I think we really want to start earlier, having these discussions about, you know, looking at the trends and looking at where we've come over the past 10 years, and what direction do we want to take moving in the future. But I do think it's very important for it to be a school committee discussion, and then, you know, potentially after that, Finance, you know, goes back to Finance Committee for discussion and administration to work out some of the logistics. Do we want to take a vote on this and move on to, okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you.
The administration is recommending accepting Metco students at kindergarten level only. This year, we accepted four students in the full-day program, and the Finance Subcommittee is making the following recommendation for 2017, 18.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee and the administrative team that the school committee accept students in the Metco program for the 2017, 2018 school year in the following grade level and number of seats, grade kindergarten, four seats.
Second, sorry.
Discussion. Stephanie? So it looks like we have five kids graduating out of Metco this year, based on that sheet we got, which means we're going below, we'll be below our total number?
We have, we have four graduating in June. We had one graduate mid-year already, so that was that, a student.
Okay, but we'd still have five. We'd be down to 34 for next year, if everybody else remained.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is a question of going below our total number that we have, which is lower than, you know, historically, we keep dropping. So I'd like to have a, the discussion about what do we, what are we looking for with Metco? What does it mean to us? Why do we have it? And where do we want to see it go? Because right now, I see it on a downward.
So, Michelle, could we bottle that up, the same discussion about School Choice, you know, going forward for next year, just so that, because it's so late in the game with numbers, and looking at our middle school, that was another factor, knowing that we're going to have some shifts at the middle school level. He wanted to be really cautious about numbers.
I, I will say, I'm not comfortable with having the number go down. So if we're going to talk about, you know, kind of status quo, I'd at least like to see the number stay at 35. So if we're gonna talk about, you know, kind of status quo, I'd at least like to see the number stay at thirty-five. And he has it going down to thirty-four.
But the numbers per grade are all over the place from what it looks like.
It's because we replace students as they graduate out.
Okay, and you usually use the same number?
We usually have voted to replace the number of students that have graduated that year. And so, you know, over the last six years, we, I think we voted based on the recommendation, which replaces, so if six graduate out, we bring in six. If five, you know, historically, I don't, I can't speak to, you know, the total number. I know that like from my own personal experience in high school, there were several students in each grade that were MECO students, you know, well above five. I'd be interested in hearing what our MECO, from our MECO coordinator. Is that you?
It's me.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we, we currently have thirty-four students right now. That's an October one report. I think there were numbers off of.
Because he grad, right, we had thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And it, they could have graduated earlier, but there was some time in and out. So I don't want it without being too much disclosure there. But, so we would have the same amount if we brought in four students next year.
Well, we've had, we started the year with thirty-five, so.
Yeah, but we kind of, we had a kind of a hangover from last year. From the year before that.
So the numbers you have are from October one, but our student graduated.
Right, November.
Before January.
Yeah, November, December.
Right, but then, so last year we had thirty-five. So with four graduating, but you're saying three graduated, we started the year with, so you replaced four this year, assuming four were graduating.
Mm-hmm.
But only three. We're still going from thirty-five to thirty-four, whether it was this year or next year.
We do this a little bit with MECO. It's up and down. We have.
But then up and now we're going down. Yeah, so it looks like we started in two thousand three, two thousand four from the sheet that was provided to us. We were at fifty-one. We're sort of hovering around fifty and then we dropped into the forties. And then now we've dropped into the thirties and into the mid-thirties. And I think the question is, in terms of participation and in terms of the origin of the program, MECO, to address racial imbalance in Massachusetts, what we want to, you know, what direction we want to take our schools as the school committee regarding the MECO program.
That's right. Because it's a, it's a program for racial imbalance, really to diversify suburban areas and give those kids that are in the inner city potentially an opportunity to experience a suburban education.
But we might, so I agree with the concept. I, I mean, one outcome could be we do MECO, all the kids go through MECO program and we don't do school choice. But I just am not comfortable tonight trying to figure that out because I just, I know you've been looking at it quite a bit. But I haven't done it myself. I've read everything, you know, but it's just, I think it's something we should definitely look at. I just don't know we can do it in an educated manner tonight. Because I just, I don't know that all of us have really thought about it enough.
And I think there are a lot of questions that we need answered. We need, you know, about the program and what's going on. And, and that bigger question of where do we want to see this go and, and how do we want to support it? And those are big questions. And I think that we will need Sandy McDonald to weigh in and we'll need, you know, the superintendent. So there are bigger questions I think we do need to answer in terms of MECO. What I would like to see is, I would, I do not want to see the number, I want to, I would like to show a statement that this is something that we believe in and I don't want to see that number go down to thirty. We've been down to, we were down to thirty-five. I don't want to see it go down to thirty-four. And I believe that would show that it's something that we value and we're gonna look at. But this downward trend, it would just add to that. I agree with what Stephanie's saying. I do think the downward trend really is reflecting a movement away from the program. And I really would like to see what we can do to enhance the program. And a lot of, it seems that a lot of other school districts, you know, everybody has a different level of participation. But some school districts do a really, really good job and other school districts have very low participation. But I think it comes down to our values as a school committee and our priorities as a school committee. This is not a financial benefit to us. It's really about sort of saying, hey, we live in a community, not just in Long Meadow. It's about our greater community and, you know, making sure that we, we are able to offer some of our programs to students in Springfield who would be interested in taking advantage of them.
But not just Springfield.
Well, it is Springfield. It's Springfield and Boston.
MECO was relegated to one zip code within Springfield.
That's how it was designed. So there, and there are two separate organizations that manage on different sides of the state. So they, they're, they do look a little bit different. But if you look on different school districts' webpages, you can really get a sense of the commitment. When you look on our webpage, it really just sort of reiterates what is said, stated on a DOE website. There's really not a whole lot extra. So, you know, just from my own standpoint as one member of the school committee, I really believe in MECO. I always have. And I think it's an incredibly important program. And I want to see the school committee move at least in the direction of commitment to the program and investigating all of the how can we do this better questions that, you know, come up.
So how exactly does the funding work for MECO?
So it's a per pupil rate and then a chunk for transportation.
But it's just a grant that comes directly to us? It doesn't negatively affect Springfield?
No, it doesn't. No, it's not. Springfield gets a portion of the grant.
And what is it per child roughly?
It's a little, it's a little over four thousand per child, if I remember right. And then another seventy-two plus for transportation. And then we.
Yeah, we have to provide transportation.
Right.
And for choice, we don't.
Correct.
Okay, so.
And there's not a bill back arrangement on MECO students.
So is there any real reason we can go from four to five this year and then look at it again next year more carefully? I mean, one student.
One student? I, I don't, you know, I don't find it, you guys parsed it out at finance sub based on enrollment. So I didn't scrutinize enrollment numbers when I was looking. I looked at a lot of MECO data today because Stephanie always like piques my interest and stuff. And so I was digging around in MECO data and, you know, I, um, the most poignant thing for me all year long is our MECO banquet. So we have a banquet at the end of the school year in our seniors. And the seniors from the other three districts also, they invite a few guests, just a select few. And each senior talks about their experiences in the public schools and how grateful they are. And we have a huge percentage of MECO kids going on to college, joining the military. I mean, it's like, really like, okay, this is why we do this. Now, you know, so throughout the year, the kids are dispersed. We don't really see them much as different. But their, their lives are different because they go back to a different community at night a lot of times. But they are all participating in sports and music. I was checking enrollments to see where they were spread out in classes. So I, they, I think they have a really good experience here. And this graduating senior claim that, that they do for sure. From not just this district, the other districts as well.
So I would amend my motion to make it five for this year. And then we would study it more carefully for next year to see if we can change the program and increase our numbers.
So knowing enrollment, you guys probably looked at enrollment in finance sub, right? For choice and MECO and you're assuming five is not gonna be a burden up the pike, I can't imagine.
I guess that's what it is. Like if we add one.
Yeah.
I'm not adding a teacher to do it. So the class size is gonna have to be a little higher in moments classes, in my opinion.
And I'd be interested in adding more than one this year, looking at the elementary enrollment projections.
But you have to look up through middle school though, because there is where you might end up having to add staff if you have larger, because they're already, yeah, figure.
Liz, I have a couple of questions. One is, you know, I know you guys looked at the enrollment, but you, we, we really don't know if one student at this point would make a difference or not. So I'm kind of hesitant. I'm voting to have one because I kind of want to hear where the enrollment is. And the, oh, for MECO, do we get reimbursed for special ed at all?
No.
Okay, so.
Well, we don't even get a circuit breaker?
So unfortunately.
Oh, circuit breaker, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
Just like they were in district.
Yeah, they're like our, our kids, yeah, for sure. They are our kids.
Okay. So I wanted to see if that would be a major factor if we had more.
You know, one student, give or take typically, you know, anybody could walk in the door and register any little five-year-old, but.
Right. And then this other one was, when is the lottery for that?
Only the second or third week in April.
It's actually listed on the Springfield website as the dead, the last day is April one. So we're like right under the wire right now for, for Springfield students to apply.
Right, okay.
It's like tonight or not at all.
Yeah. For them to apply, they have no idea how many slots are available for them. They won't, you know.
Right.
And I did want to just read this. I thought this was interesting, just going to a little bit about, you know, what Sue was saying. This is the Pioneer Institute for Public Policy Research and they did a big study a few years back. And it said that MECO students at suburban schools score, score higher on the MCAS exams. A higher percentage of them graduate from high school in four years and they're more likely to enroll in college. And there were some very compelling, there were a lot of compelling statistics of success in the program. And I think Liz, just in, in talking about the concern about enrollment, historically, when we look back, it's been a boat of replacing those seniors. And so this was one, this would essentially be what it's doing. It didn't happen, I guess, there was a little bit of a hiccup because one student graduated. But it would be keeping that thirty-five by replacing the seniors.
But that doesn't affect.
I don't know if we've done that.
Kindergarten. MECO.
From before when they were put into kindergarten.
If you lose four kids in twelfth grade, that doesn't mean your kindergarten's gonna be, have a high enrollment or whatever. It's not gonna mess it up. I just wish that this was, we had a week so that you could check to see if it, if it meant something. That's all.
Which part? What do you mean meant?
Adding one more student. I mean, I would love to add more students. I just.
I think.
I just think that because it was recommended to have the four, and it's been recommended to have four for the past six years.
We could, I think in the past, we could vote on the four tonight and then come back and vote later on the one after they get it.
When's our next meeting? Eleven. April eleventh.
Because I think you just go.
I think that's cutting it close to the line.
So no one else besides me is interested in adding more than that? Because I'm interested in, in requesting an analysis that would add more students than that this year. And then, you know, if it comes back, I don't know. I guess the timeline is so compressed at this point that there's really no way for us to. But, but I do feel confident that we can accommodate more than, you know, a few kids in the MECO program. And I would feel comfortable suggesting more, but if I'm the only one, clearly. What are our? It's irrelevant. What are our enrollment numbers for kindergarten? Do we have those?
Well, we have the projected.
I'm not confident in that at all. I think, Liz, I'm confident about the one. Because the numbers are like, you know, sixteen, some of them at center. So we're trying, like, that's why all the choice are going to center. Because centers are really low. So another student, unless we get this huge influx that we're not expecting, I'm not too worried about that. I would be worried if we do anything more dramatic because what's happening at our elementary is we've dropped enough where we have, the staffing is probably too high. So you don't want to fill in this gap where we think, well, we have plenty of room. We have plenty of room, but we probably have less staff. And so when you start adding or keeping staff and you're getting four thousand or five thousand, then you're actually paying more than you're getting.
And so I don't want to get.
I'm getting K one two, but as they go up and.
And then you have middle school, where the middle school is really, if you project out, it's gonna be dramatically smaller. So that's the type of analysis I want to look at because you'd have to be, I think the program, we could definitely, I think, add more kids. It's just how many? And I'm not sure. The one, you know, we're just replacing. And I think that was what Marty said to us in the subcommittee meeting with, is that he was trying to replace the ones that were leaving. So the question, whether it was four or five, I mean, I could see that. But I'd be reluctant tonight to do more than that because I, I just, there's a lot of variables, including the middle school project, that I'd want to really think about carefully before we do it. But there's no second to my amended motion really.
Oh, did you amend it?
Yeah.
Second?
I'll second it.
What was the?
Three seconds.
To make it from.
Or five, okay.
Five.
Yeah, so if I'm the, I mean, I'd really like to see that number more at forty and I feel confident about recommending that. But again, if I'm the only one who feels that way, then we can vote. I'm comfortable about ending voting. Michael?
So I would suggest, you know, obviously, you know, looking to next year, that if there is a strong interest in adding additional MECO slots, which it sounds like overall there is, that in addition to adding the one slot this year, that we amend that motion to then ask or, you know, to, in addition to that, ask for a report or an analysis of what the impact of adding additional slots would be and how to do that, you know, and what those scenarios look like. I think it's, it's valuable for finance subcommittee and for the school committee to begin examining that as early as possible. And, you know, at least this way you're not kind of kicking the can down the road and then asking, well, why, we asked for a report last year, so.
You kind of have to restate your philosophy on the MECO program as well, you know.
So do we want to add that to the motion?
I think it's an important motion.
I would definitely agree with you and also the school choice, I'd say the two.
So I'm gonna amend the, the motion to include an administrative analysis of the MECO program with recommendations on how to increase slots and what those increases would mean from a budgetary perspective. And from a, from a staffing perspective, which I guess is also a budgetary perspective. But I want to know like how many additional sections does it mean based on certain additions?
Can you take the motion?
That's what I'm gonna tell him to have a third, to have a third motion.
You can just amend mine.
I'm amending, I'm amending your amendment.
Without the, to be honest with you.
This is so clerical.
If you want us to do that.
You want the motion to go to you.
We have a second on that.
Second.
Thanks.
I think.
If you're gonna amend this.
I know.
Because I don't remember what I just said.
I really want a nice analysis and evaluation of this program as a whole.
Me too.
Of the kids, of what we're doing, of what's going on in the school, how we're supporting them. I, I really want a thorough look at the program. And there's always, with every program, you can improve it. I, I want input from staff, admin, families, kids, and I think we're lacking that. And I think with any program, you want that.
Yep.
And I don't think we've gotten that. So I don't know if that needs to be in that motion, but that is really what I'm looking for. And then, of course, we have to look at slots and, and what are we looking for in this program and going forward? And it is something that I really want on the table.
So I'll reopen my motion for a second. Let me reopen my amendment. In addition to adding one slot, I, I'd like to move that we also ask the administrative team to produce a report examining all facets of the MECO program and make a series of recommendations on ways to improve the MECO program for future years.
And can we add second to the amendment?
Oh, my God.
Can we include in that, looking at how other districts, I just want to look at other districts, how they.
Sure. And, you know, and a regional comparison of, or a statewide comparison of similar MECO programs.
Okay, second. Let's vote.
Well, I just wanted to say too, that I think it would be a good.
I'm gonna amend this.
What?
So I don't know how many more times I can amend it.
I think it would be helpful to have Sandy McDonald at some point come to our meeting and, and talk to us.
She'll be happy to come. She's actually upstairs, added up a function with some of the MECO students, so.
So we'll be sure to invite her to one of our meetings this year. And that would be a good way for us to start to get some information from her. Okay. All those in favor?
Marty didn't know he'd be gone getting homework at the same time.
Oh, he did.
You think that's Marty's homework?
No, it's your homework. Sorry, Sue.
We'll talk after the meeting.
Sorry, Sue.
Oh, I'm all for MECO.
Yeah. So next for, we have some building, we have two buildings, no, I'm skipping way ahead. Wishful thinking. We're at the bus pass fee.
Okay.
Okay. Finance Subcommittee considered the fee for riding the bus in 2017, 2018. Currently, the fee is $235 per rider with a family cap of $470. The Finance Subcommittee is recommending the following motion.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee set the bus pass fee to $260 per rider with a family cap of $520, beginning with the 2017, 2018 school year.
Second.
Any discussion on the bus pass fee?
Why do we need to do this?
Apparently, it's more in line with our expenses, that's what Tom said to me, it totally made sense.
Well, I think, still not gonna get us to what we spend at all, but I think it's, you know, an improvement, and then also, I think he compared areas, I think he gave us some surrounding areas' bus information, does that sound right?
Well, the cost of the buses has gone up, is that it?
Well, we depleted a big chunk of that, remember when we gave the town some out of that fund to help with kindergarten a couple of years ago?
No, it's a different account.
At one point, it wasn't. That's parking lot, oh, run bus, I'm sorry.
But the, so Tom was able to negotiate a better transportation contract rate for us this year, but we're still, these fees are nowhere near covering what we spend. So I think with the budget, the way it's been over the last few years, we just didn't feel that we should subsidize the bus passes as much as we have been. I mean, this is still minor change, but if we make minor changes like this over time consistently, at least we don't, because the bus costs have gone up quite a bit until this year, so we felt it was, you know, trying to balance the two needs.
What are we, what is our annual subsidy per bus? Is that, I mean, I know Tom's not here to answer that, but did you guys discuss that in finance sub?
We did, I'm trying to remember, I know each bus costs about $50,000, and so we have, the buses we have, and we definitely are, I think it's around $200,000 or so that we subsidize the costs.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's not a massive increase, you know, it's obviously increasing fees is never something you want to be, you want to do, you know.
Stephanie? These kids are within the two-mile radius of the tracks, so.
You're not charged, if you, well, up until sixth grade, you're not charged at all.
So these, yeah, we're providing a service that we don't need to.
Yeah. Right, because that subsidy also includes the K through six students who ride outside the two-mile.
Right.
Who don't pay.
Yeah, so it includes.
So these are under two-mile, K through six.
Yeah.
And/or seventh through 12th grade.
Like to move the question, then? You ready?
Yes.
All those in favor? The increase for the bus pass.
You know, I'm curious about, as a really quick side note, is what happens between sixth and seventh grade where students can walk more than two miles?
They're like, their legs grow a little longer.
Are they, are they just stamina?
I would have to answer that more than we would. So a lot of growth.
Next is the parking fee.
Finance Subcommittee considered the fee for student parking at Long Meadow High School in 2017, 2018. Currently, the fee is $30 for a student parking parrot permit. The Finance Subcommittee is recommending the following motion.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee set the student parking pass fee to $50 for the year, beginning with the 2017, 2018 school year.
Second.
Yeah, so I don't want to raise this parking fee, I don't know how much discussion y'all had in Finance Subcommittee about it, but.
So this is the budget line that we gave money to the town for, so that we could make it hit somewhere, yeah.
So can I just ask, is there a issue, I mean, obviously, so the issue last year when we depleted, when we did that transfer for kindergarten was that because the high school parking lot is essentially brand-new, there's not a lot of maintenance that needs to go into it. Has that situation changed, or are we just looking to replenish the revolving account?
I think it's replenished, but also, this, this fee would still be pretty low, it used to be 250, I guess, or something like that, and there was a big.
Joseph Renal.
Issue with that, but then we went to the other extreme, which is we went lower than we probably should have. Even 50 is still low.
Right. Yeah, we went lower knowing we had a pretty large amount in it, and that large amount is not there anymore.
But we don't have anything in the foreseeable future, but we just start saving again.
I think there was a question of whether or not we might need patrol, not patrol, but like an extra caution guard or something, because there's so many cars coming in and out, and there's, we're chancing, you know, more accidents, I think, has become, so they were, they were gonna do something at the parking lot.
There's a, there's a recommendation in front of the traffic committee to, like, make it, what's the one, to like, put some curbing in to separate out the exits, so that there's less accidents.
That, any of that work could come out of that transportation.
John's been waiting for a while.
Oh, sorry.
Is that $50 for the entire year?
Yes.
But some students don't get their license, or they don't, they don't take advantage of it until, say, November, or January, or even March or April.
It's prorated.
It's still $50?
No, it's prorated.
They prorate it, it's, so it's $50 if you're here.
It is prorated.
Prorated, yeah.
Okay.
We ask that, yeah.
So I think it'll go down by like $5 on the three.
And when that lot needs to be repaved, it's gotta come out of that fund, and that's gonna be.
That's what they'll tell us?
Huge.
Yes.
Shouldn't have to.
Shouldn't have to, yes.
Well, we don't own the building, so.
No, yeah, I don't think that's.
So the point of having the fee, then, is, is.
I mean, I had it for the crossing guard.
Not replacing, but, you know, like, the more minor things.
Right.
Like, if we do end up putting curbing, the idea is make it like this entrance or exit, do that over here potentially at some point, those type of things.
Signage.
But I would say repaving.
Okay.
Keeping the tree, you know, the grass and trees in there.
They can charge us for the plowing.
They can charge you for the plowing? Okay.
So.
I'm ready.
Everyone's ready? Okay, I, I mean, I'm gonna vote against this, I really don't, I think that the parking fee should remain where nominal, 25, $30, I don't think it should depart from that. So I'm gonna vote against this. So is everyone ready?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor? opposed? There you go. Thank you.
Finance Subcommittee considered the tuition rate charged for students who would like to attend LPS but reside outside of the state of Massachusetts. Currently, the tuition rate is $14,000. We don't have any tuition students at this time. The Finance Subcommittee is recommending the following motion.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee set the tuition rate at $14,385 for the year, beginning with the 2017, 2018 school year.
Second.
Discussion.
I know there's revenue always involved here, but what's the rationale that we have no one at 14,000, but now we're gonna raise it to 14,385, to ensure that no one in their right mind.
I think it's our, it's our per pupil cost for the 15, our 14, 15 school year.
Yeah, except, like, somehow.
There are some people talking about.
It's our per pupil allotment, or cost for the 14, 15 school year.
It's what we actually spend.
Yeah.
17, you mean 17, 18 school year?
No, it will be that year, 15.
Oh, okay.
So, so this is like, we had that situation last year, I think, where somebody came from a different country, we let them come in, they were living with somebody, they paid this rate, so it's not, I don't think it's so much the cost in those situations, it's just if somebody moves in from somewhere else for a period of time, they pay this rate.
Would we really charge someone who came from another country that stayed?
Yeah.
With someone paying taxes locally, we would charge them?
Yes.
If they came for the express reason to go to school here, yes.
Well, I remember way back in the dark ages, we had a program called AFS.
Yes.
American Field Service, which explicitly was designed to bring children from Europe to the United States, and they would come over.
And we had children go.
And they would stay with a local family, and we did not charge the local family.
Wasn't it an exchange program?
That's a different program.
That's a different program.
This is people just coming here without us.
So the situation last year was that there were these students residing outside the country who had family friends in Massachusetts.
Family, yep.
Or family, and wanted to attend school in Long Meadow. Historically, it's been if someone from Connecticut, for instance, someone living in Enfield, chose to attend Long Meadow.
Right.
We would charge them the full cost of what it, what the per pupil breakdown is. So in the past, it was like 12,500, and obviously, we've increased our per pupil cost to 14,385.
And we still get inquiries, I get them regularly.
Is that 14,385 close to what we're actually expending to educate a student? I thought we were below 10,000.
No, that would be well below net school spending.
Yeah.
Basically, I mean, it's, we just take the total budget and divide it by the number of students.
You can find it on the Dusy website. It's up.
Do you know what it is offhand?
It's 14,385 right now.
14,385, yeah, for last year.
Okay.
We figure it for this year.
Ready to vote? All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, we had some building use requests. I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee, bless you, approved the building use request from Satvitcom Shivam, School of Dance for Use of LHS, on September 8th and 9th, 2017.
Second.
No, it's good. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approved the building use request from the Indian Association of Greater Springfield for use of Glenbrook Middle School on April 29, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
And we had a budget transfer, I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approved the budget transfer request as outlined in the document titled FY17 General Fund Budget Transfer Number Two, dated March 7, 2017.
Go ahead.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thanks to the Finance Committee. You did good without Tom. Next on the agenda, we have the Policy Subcommittee report, we met on Monday, the 13th of March. Stephanie will give us an update.
So you should have in your packet, Public's Right to Know for First Reading, that is adopted from MASC. You should also have JKA. Are all of the pages on JKA, I think in your online, it's the correct, but my packet, it was, there was a missing page, what is this other, yeah, so you're missing a page to that?
This is the policy we just couldn't pass.
I, coming back to haunt me, but it was, it's all there online, on the online packet, but this page here is missing, so I think in the copier, it went to double side, and it missed this page, so you just have the first two. It's just a policy that won't, excuse me.
Well, why don't we? We just need a motion, right?
No.
We don't, no.
You don't need anything.
Okay.
We can email you the full.
Okay.
Policy again, sorry about that.
So it'll be on our website for 30 days.
Okay.
For the public to provide it.
Okay.
And that's it. Well, we went over that, and then we, we discussed the graduation gowns, which is on the agenda.
Liz? Um, just a question about the JKA, and on the online version, is there, does it show what was changed?
It doesn't, I don't think, and I had gone through my copy to kind of, there's.
Give a gist.
The majority of it is from MASC, the procedure outline is also from MASC, but it's been rearranged to follow our procedure, which is JKAR, I think, so it's just been rearranged, that's all the same. We included the definition of what a timeout was, there was an update on a process for obtaining principal approval for a timeout exceeding 30 minutes, and then it was added, or a restraint exceeding 20 minutes, I believe that was a new piece that needed to be added. Jean had a role in this, too, and then, so the definition of timeout was included, and then that last, there's a section, oh, you have it online, where it says designated timeout rooms shall only be used with the permission of the building principal, or his or his, his or her designee, that was added, and I think that was pretty much, there weren't a whole lot of.
Okay, thanks.
Changes.
Do you want to move the gown overview there, or do you want to hold off?
So I read Marty had included something in his report about the gowns, I'm comfortable talking about it tonight.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's fine, we had a good discussion about it.
Yeah, I don't know if it's worth reading what he wrote to begin it.
It's a nice statement on it, so.
You want to read, do you want?
Sure. If you'd like me to.
Go ahead.
So this is from the superintendent's report.
So he said, "As you are aware, graduation gowns are a topic for your agenda this evening. This topic first surfaced with the Policy Subcommittee, which asked me to review our approach to this topic. I was pleased to learn that during my review of this, Long Meadow High School is strongly committed to the creation of a safe and respectful learning climate for LGBTQ students. In 2015, Long Meadow High School began allowing students the chance to choose whether they wear a black or white gown at graduation. This moved Long Meadow High School towards alignment with an advisory issued by the Massachusetts Department of Education, following the passage of an Act Relative to Gender Identity, Chapter 199 of the Acts of 2011. Regarding graduation gowns, the advisory stated the following. The new law on gender identity provides a good opportunity for schools to review their gender distinct policies. For example, some schools require students to wear gender-based garb, for garb, garb for graduation, or have gender-based dress codes for prom, special events, and daily attire. Schools should eliminate gendered policies and practices such as these. Though members of the Policy Subcommittee express their interest in adopting the single color this June, I would recommend transitioning towards a single-color graduation gown in 2018, or June of 2018. I would avoid any action this year, as students from the class of 2017 have already selected and purchased their gowns that they will wear commencement."
Point of information.
Yeah.
Do students purchase their graduation gown? Or don't we supply them?
I was so surprised that they purchased them.
I think we've purchased them.
Did you?
Just had to fill out a form.
Yeah. We purchased them.
Yeah, I think what he meant to say is that the district, through student fees, has purchased them.
The district purchased. We, the district.
Why don't we rent them now? Why do we?
You get to keep them.
It seems like something we should rent.
Well, you take it home with you.
Halloween costume for years to come.
I've been a judge eight times.
Can I just ask?
Yeah, John, go ahead.
Stephanie, you raised this issue, and could you just give us your take on it?
I would love to.
Where you're coming from.
So I don't believe that there's any reason that I've heard, or anyone has expressed as to why we segregate based on gender at a graduation. There's nothing that backs it up, except that historically, it's been done, but I don't see this gender segregation, I don't see any reason for it, I don't believe it, it has a role in academics, and so while the LGBTQ community has raised the issue that we've heard across the high school, for me, yeah, it brought the question to the table of why are we segregating based on gender at all?
I know.
And so for me, that really is the overall issue, and I think there's no reason for it.
So, I, for that reason, would go to a single color. I do agree with waiting until next June. I think the kids have already picked them out. It's really late in the game, so. And then, it would start new when they come in. They actually get measured at the beginning of the year, and it would really just roll out nicely that way. We met with Tom Landers about it and discussed it. I got met with him two or three, I think, three times. So, yeah, it just felt like next year, we could just roll it out and it wouldn't be really anything to it.
That strikes me. Well, I'm just offering my comment. That, that seems to make a lot of sense. Historically, the black and the white goes all the way back to, I guess, the founding of the school in nineteen fifty-five. And a lot of things were keyed off of that, like the jet jot, or jet black, okay? And I don't know whether white was supposed to be, you know, more feminine, black was evil, I don't know. But it was the boys, or the men, the young men were wearing that.
It was the fifties.
It would seem to me to make a lot more sense to, as you said, you know, not get into gender issues at all, it's just, you're wearing graduation robe. It promotes an egalitarian. You are all equal now.
Exactly.
You have all satisfied the requirements of a diploma. Now, there's one little catch to that, and that is, the Honor Society has a goal task.
Task.
You earned that.
I haven't heard anyone complain about that.
No, and I think, yeah, we did talk about that. And even at the collegiate level, it's not segregated according to gender, but you do have markers based on your schooling, or your, you know, something like Honor Society. And so, that's different. But there's a reason for it. If you're trying to, you know, make a point to segregate according to gender, what's the reason for it? And that's where there isn't really an answer.
So, you wanna make a motion?
Well, it was to make a motion, so.
Okay.
Do you wanna make it?
We should have a motion.
Do we have it?
We don't have a motion.
Do we?
I move on, I move on the recommendation of the Policy Subcommittee that Long Meadow High School offer black, only black gowns for graduation for the school, beginning school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Is that right?
Only graduating class of two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Whatever.
Something like that.
Second.
Diana cleaned it up.
Can I do a point of order on that?
Are you moving it?
Oh, yeah, I guess I can't move it, can I?
I'm happy to make a motion, but point of order before doing it. Actually, Stephanie, you probably should, because this is your thing. But is there, do we know within our policy manual if there is a specific, so should we potentially just kind of make, put it in writing as a policy section so that it's there?
So, we had talked about that, because there isn't anything in there except for graduation procedures, which is really nothing. So, we did talk about that. Should it be a policy, or should it just be what we do?
Right.
And I think we came to the, in that discussion, that it should just be what we do. We don't really need a policy to say that we do it, that the gowns are black.
But we did decide that it was important to have the School Committee vote on it.
Right.
But it didn't need to be part of a written policy.
So, if we were to codify it by saying that students will be issued a single color, or the same single colored gown, and not specify?
Should we do single color, or should we do it black?
Or the same gown?
Yeah.
Well, the gown could refer to the cut, though, so I think we have to say single color.
I think right now, we could, or we could just say black for right now, because it's gonna be black. And then, if they need to, School Committee needs to change it in the future, it'd be an easy thing to change.
I just, you know, like, obviously, School Committee votes, but like, how many people in fifteen years are gonna go back and read the minutes from the March twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen minutes?
No, it's, no, they, yeah, no, I don't think that matters. I think if they wanna change colors, they can change colors.
Yeah, no, I would leave it ambiguous. I'm just saying, like, in terms of the actual force of the vote we're about to take, you know, I don't want future principals or future committees to just kind of say, well, I don't know, did they ever vote?
Well, oh, you mean, you mean not having it?
Yeah, I wanna codify, just so we can say we codified it.
As part of the policy.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
I just, you know, I want.
You want it in a, you want it written into policy?
Yeah, why don't we just, I mean, so why don't we vote to amend the policy? I don't, would that just require?
Then we should keep it as a single color. The language should probably be single color, don't you think?
There's not an actual, I mean, the policy is, that's in there, we'd have to add a policy.
It would be its own standing policy.
I mean, we already have a nondiscrimination policy.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
We shouldn't have two colors in the first place.
Right.
So, all we're doing is following that other policy.
But what Michael's saying makes sense, and I think that there's no harm, and I think it logically makes sense, just to have policy Z, Z, whatever, and just have that statement, the motion.
Or honestly, like, under graduation procedures, we can just add a line, you know, that says at the beginning of each school year, students will be issued a single colored gown.
That's better.
For graduation.
Yeah.
And like, leave it at that.
John.
Do we have to specify a color? And I'm thinking here, you know.
We don't.
You hear a lot of talk about rainbows, no?
Yeah.
Okay. What if some student said, okay, I wanna wear red? Someone else wants to show up in green?
I mean, it's black.
Are we gonna say no?
Well, what we're just saying in the policy is that we are issuing, so whatever, you know, the gowns, I don't know about that. That would be a discussion that the principal would have to have. If that came from a student, that would have to go to Tom Landers, that would have to be a discussion between Tom and Marty. That's a whole separate issue. But for now, what we're offering is the single color of black.
I mean, and honestly, like, it's black because, it's black and white because those are our school colors. And Islam Meadow was red and white until, you know, and so it's like, I don't know, it's kind of like the final show of school unity before everybody goes off and does their own thing forever.
And I really wanna give Stephanie a lot of credit on this issue, because she really just went for it and brought it to everybody's attention, and did a lot of legwork behind the scenes that, you know, you don't see when we're sitting at these meetings. And I'm really grateful to you for doing that, because I think symbolically, it means so much. And I, even just having graduated from Long Meadow High School, that I remember that feeling of, why am I wearing white? And, you know, that distinction shouldn't be there. We should, everybody should be wearing the same gown. And I really appreciate all the work you've done on this, so thank you. Liz?
Just a question. Did you ask the students what they felt about that?
So, we decided, in talking with Marty and with Tom, that this really was, because it was, really involved civil rights to an extent, that it was better to be addressed from the Policy Sub, down in the Policy, rather than.
In Islam Meadow, they had the same issue, and there was a lot of angry students.
Exactly. And when you're talking about civil rights, when you're talking about gender segregation without a reason why, it really comes, for me, and I advocated that, it's a policy and it's something that we, as the School Committee, decide whether we're gonna do or not. And I have followed the different schools and what's happened. And really, the trend is towards one gown, in all of the surrounding towns, because there isn't an answer to, why are you segregating?
I also just, you know, I also think it's important.
Let's do a motion. We really, like, the meetings take forever, because we don't do motions.
Okay.
We gotta do a motion, vote on the motion, move on to another town.
And the motion includes the color black.
I think just a single color.
I think we'll say single color and leave it to the, to the high school to decide what that is.
Right. What if it has to be white?
Yeah.
Diane, and it will.
It could be white.
Do we need to include the language that it will be included in policy? You'd insert the policy for graduation.
So, I'll make the motion, just so we can clarify.
Right. Hold on one second, Michael. There's, is, does that make sense?
Yep.
So, then.
So, then I move that, you know, that Long Meadow High School graduations, starting in the school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, provide single color gowns for graduation, and that the policy section titled Graduation Procedures be amended to include language communicating that, at the beginning of each school year, students will be issued a single color graduation gown.
Second.
Good.
Was that for the, was that motion?
Two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, school year.
It said school year, not graduation. Okay. So, it's clear it's for next year.
I hope so.
That's what I was, wait.
Is that clear, Diane?
Well, that's the intent.
Okay.
Any other discussion before we vote?
I just wanna make one comment, that I also appreciate that you brought this up. I think it's an important issue. And I also wanna commend the high school for, you know, being very open to letting students wear what they wanna wear. You know, last year at graduation, and previous years, we've seen students wear the gown of their choice. And I think that's a really great first step towards this. This is, this is kind of closing the door on that, and, you know, not needing to facilitate. We're not giving them a choice anymore.
John?
I still have a problem with what you said. What color gown can we expect next June?
Probably black, but it's not my choice, I don't know. I wanna just, I wanna, yeah, I would guess it's black.
Yeah, but the way you phrased it, it could be white.
Yeah.
It could be, but I think, I think it.
Well, don't we wanna make a choice, make a decision?
I think the most important piece for me is that it's a single color, and that we're not segregating according to gender. And then, they can decide their high school colors are black and white, my guess is it's gonna be black.
Yeah.
But, but for me, this is about moving, not segregating, moving to one color.
The only reason why I'm thinking we should say black is because that really was the decision of the Subcommittee. Black, that was black.
Well, I know it's not gonna be white, so it doesn't, you know, I really feel confident that there is, you know.
We could also leave it to the high school, like, the student body, to vote on what color they want.
Well, now you're, now, do we want that gray?
I really think we should, I really think we need to stay with the language of black that we.
As amended.
I'm fine with black.
I second the black.
Okay, let's get rid of the gray.
All those, all those in favor?
Black.
Thank you, John, for blacks, black.
Great. This is, this is really, really, you know, getting down to the crucial minutia here.
We have the joint resolution on our agenda next. Do we want to, I don't think we need to read it unless somebody feels we need to read it. Everybody's familiar with the language. This was a joint resolution that was presented to us at the joint meeting between the Select Board and the School Committee, and.
Okay, I have some comments.
Okay, just give me one sec, John. Oh, I just wanted to let you know, the committee know, that the Select Board did vote to approve this, and I do not recall the count, if it was unanimous or not.
It was not.
Who voted to?
The Select Board did.
Oh.
They voted no.
Foster voted no. Was he the only one?
It was three to one, because I think somebody was missing, right?
Yes.
Was it last meeting?
Mr. Gold was missing.
Yeah, he was out.
Oh, because it was the same meeting that they approved.
I think we should read it, though, because the public has no idea what we're talking about.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it?
Sure, yeah, yeah, I think that would do.
Whereas the Select Board and School Committee recognize the substantial facility needs of the community, and whereas the construction of a new Department of Public Works needs to commence immediately, and whereas a plan to address the serious needs of Williams and Glenbrook Middle Schools must be initiated, and whereas a suitable adult center is needed, and whereas the Select Board and School Committee want to ensure that the impact of taxpayers in meeting these needs is limited to the greatest extent possible, and whereas careful planning is essential to meeting these needs, now therefore is jointly resolved by the Select Board and the School Committee of the town of Long Meadow, that one, a statement of interest for the middle schools will be submitted on or before April one, two thousand seventeen, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, to begin the process of addressing the needs of the middle schools. If the application is not accepted this year, we agree that it will be submitted in two thousand eighteen, when the application process begins again. A new DPW facility that meets the needs of the town now and in the future should be constructed at the site recommended by the DPW Committee, known as the Grand Meadows Tennis Club, as soon as possible. Three, the next design phase of the new adult center at Greenwood should begin as soon as possible, considering the needs of the Parks and Recreation Department. Four, every effort should be made to reduce the cost of each project without compromising core functions. Five, every effort should be made by the Select Board and School Committee to work in collaboration with each other, as well as the Finance Committee. Six, the planning process should include opportunities for participation by town residents.
Second.
Well, I wasn't moving it.
Oh. Well, I second it.
Do you wanna move it?
Yeah, I move that we accept the resolution as presented. The untitled resolution.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Well, okay, I'll second, but I wanna comment on it.
Okay, yeah, we're just seconding the motion.
Second.
John, second, and then, John, you can go ahead.
Okay. Number four at the bottom. Every effort should be made to reduce the cost of each project without compromising core functions. I have a problem with that, in that, you know, right now, there's a big debate about the environment, and how expensive the environment protocols are. This is the gist of the Trump administration's argument against any kind of guidelines for an environmentally safe and sensitive building proposal. I have no doubt that perhaps it could cost more money to erect an environmentally sensitive building than one that, you know, a coal-fired, oil, fossil-fuel-fired building. But, well, I would support that, as in the long-term interests of the town, to have an environmentally safe building program. And when you start throwing in there that every effort must be made to reduce the cost, then that opens you up to, you know, people shooting it down because it's gonna cost more money. Well, it might cost a little bit more money to do an environment like a solar project or a wind project, but wouldn't it be worthwhile? Okay? And then, the planning process should include opportunities for participation by town residents. Well, almost everything we do is open to town residents. Every board and every committee, the School Committee and the Select Board, start their meetings with, open to the public. And if you're looking around this room right now, you see how far that goes. There's no one here tonight, except us. But participation by town residents can also be a stumbling block. It could be a veto. And I know, coming off the high school building project, there were some people who were on the original selection committee that didn't like what the majority wanted, and tried to scuttle the whole thing on the grounds that they had been overridden or whatever. Well, it's just, those are two concerns I have, sticking cost in there and saying, we're gonna have the cheapest thing available. I'm not advocating it should be a spend-thrift proposal, but I don't like being told, or be asked to sign off on something that's gonna be the cheapest thing possible. Just my thoughts.
So, just on the environmental piece that you spoke about, because it's a valid point, I, also important to remember that when we adopted the Green Communities Act, we also chose to adopt, or we had to adopt, the Stretch Energy Code, which requires a higher level of energy efficiency in our buildings. And we got additional reimbursement points on this high school for choosing more energy-efficient and environmentally-sensitive building materials through the Mass Chips Program. So, I mean, that actually was an op, that was us reducing costs on our end and becoming more energy-efficient. I think that's, I mean, you know, I think that that's something to keep in mind, is that it is possible. I also think that it's important to, it's an important value to keep in mind when we're spending taxpayer dollars, that we should try to reduce costs. That doesn't mean we will be able to reduce costs. And, you know, because we've locked ourselves into requiring additional efficiencies, because there are building codes that require a high level of, you know, structural integrity, because we have a community that wants certain add-ons, or, you know, add-alternatives to building projects, I don't know if that means necessarily that we have to forego those values. I just think that it means, like, did we need a hydraulic stage, or could we have gotten away with risers? I think we're happy with the stage we have. But that's one of those things that you have a conversation about through the process.
Russ?
So, I attended the board meeting when this was voted, and Richard Foster made some comments about why he was voting against it. And I basically agree with most of what he said. I think as elected officials, we, you know, our role is really School Committee, and we have to vote on the middle school project, we need to look at all the different, you know, things that affect the schools and students. I'm uncomfortable voting for a resolution like this, because I haven't done, I've done a ton of work on the middle schools. I've done almost no work on the adult center, other than what I've seen in the paper, and same thing with DPW. I would reiterate again, which has nothing to do with committee, and, you know, normally I wouldn't even bring this up, but because of resolutions here, I think the DPW Grand Meadows site, I think it's probably our only option. I don't disagree with that, as a citizen of the town. I don't disagree with that as a citizen of the town. But as a committee member, it's just not my role to be voting on those things. So I think it's, you know, up to the residents to decide, you know, about the costs and location, all those things. I mean, I have my own personal opinion. I think it's okay over there. It's probably the only spot left. But it's, it's really not my role as a school committee member. I mean, we certainly weren't elected to be voting on resolutions about all the town projects. The board, on the other hand, is elected to do that, but even they, I mean, the resolution, I guess I've voted against every single resolution so far because I just don't think we should do resolutions, we should just take action. But on this one, we took action on the middle schools, which is our role. Taking action on, or making a statement about the other projects, I just don't think it makes sense. I do want to say I don't think anybody should vote against DPW because they think schools should be first. That's not what the town's about. It's one town, we have these projects. Whatever you think is most important should go first. I mean, I think DPW is in the worst shape personally. But if anybody was thinking we need to vote no against DPW, or anyone thinks that because the schools are coming up at some point, that wouldn't be wise, in my opinion. I think they're unrelated. It's one town, and we have to figure out our projects and capital approvals.
Michael.
So I typically would agree with that statement, that I don't want to get into the business of, you know, telling other boards that we agree or don't agree with their position until we get to town meeting. But what I think is a valuable thing and the only, and probably to our, speaks to our best interests as a committee, is that this resolution, at a minimum, ensures that we have a select board that will submit a statement of interest into the future. And although it specifies 2018, and you'll most likely have to get another joint resolution again next year or something, I think it's important that, you know, we remember that we've had a lot of trouble on this committee getting our statements of interest submitted. And I, you know, I give Marty a lot of credit because I think he really carried and quarterbacked that all the way home. I get nervous that future select boards are not going to be as willing to listen to, you know, the concerns that we have as a board. And so, you know, the reason I think this is important is because it protects our interest in, you know, in the short term. You know, but obviously, I, you know, and I think that's, I think that's the most important piece of this, is that we, we get to get them, we have them agreeing to do it again next year, because we know that most likely we're not going to get our SOIs picked up.
Stephanie.
So, I will say, as I've said before and again, I've not yet voted for a resolution to go through. And this one, I've said it before, and I echo what Russ has said, in that I'm not going to speak on the DPW, I'm not going to speak on the adult center. Those are areas I don't know. That's not why I was elected. I'm here to talk about education and the schools. And then to Michael's, I know I've said this before, I also will not get into, I'm going to do this, so you'll do that. And that's exactly what this resolution is, is that we'll say we're for the DPW, and we'll say we're for the adult center so that you sign our SOI, and I'm not, that's something I will not do. I will be strong advocate for the schools, for the students, for the staff, and what we need to make our schools better, but I will not do something and speak about something that I don't know any more than residents do. It wasn't why I was elected to talk about the DPW or the adult center. It doesn't mean I don't have thoughts on it. It doesn't mean I don't support it. It doesn't mean I, I don't want to work in, as school committee members. We are required to work with the select board on our budget, but I can't make a statement on those things. They're not things I have enough knowledge on, and I definitely won't speak on it, not having the knowledge, for the purpose of getting them to put through an SOI. So for that reason, once again, I will be voting against another resolution.
Michelle.
So, I am echoing a lot of what Stephanie and Michael and what John has said and Russ. I appreciate the sentiment behind this resolution. I think it shows that we are trying to work together to, you know, improve the town. But I don't support the concept of a resolution, and I've said that in previous discussions about resolutions. I do, as a, you know, from a personal standpoint, I support an improved DPW center, and I agree that it needs to happen very soon. As a school committee member, I see how much we rely on the DPW, and so I want to make sure that it's functioning and that it's capable of doing what it needs to do. I support an improved DP, an improved senior center for the town, but I can't support this resolution, even though I support a lot of what it has involved.
So I, you know, obviously was part of creating this resolution. We talked about it way back in Joint Admin, and talked to Stephen a bit about putting it together. And I think one of the reasons that I felt, and I still do feel comfortable, although I 100% respect the hesitations of my colleagues, I personally feel comfortable with the resolution. I think my concern coming in to the school committee this year has been the way that the boards have kind of been in their own worlds and done their own thing without a lot of collaboration. And while on its face, it's true that the DPW isn't really our purview, and the senior center really isn't our purview, to me, this is really just a symbolic gesture of collaboration between the boards. And sure, you know, when push comes to shove, maybe it doesn't have a lot of teeth, but it does represent something for me personally, and something that I really want to be a part of changing in this town. And it might not be, you know, this might not be the correct vehicle, but I do feel the sentiment from you all, and I, and I believe from members of the select board, too, that we want, especially this year, I've really seen people building bridges and wanting to do a better job of collaborating instead of sort of that infighting, infighting, infighting that's gone on for so many years. So for me, that's what this represents moving forward, is that, you know, that spirit of collaboration. And I, I do need to say, as Russ stated, I feel it's important for me as the chair to say that I do support the DPW, the recommendations of the DPW committee. I know that they've worked really hard and done a deep and thorough analysis and vetting to come to this conclusion. And I certainly have had my own personal hesitations about costs and with all the projects that are going on, but I really understand in communicating with the town manager, communicating with the select board, how they came to that decision. So I do feel comfortable saying that I support the committee's decision to locate it at Grand Meadows, hoping that the transaction goes smoothly.
Russ.
So I'd agree with a lot of them. I think, well, for one, I think this year, the interaction between the board and the school committee's been much better. I think the budget process went better, the SOI process, I think they gave us some good input, we incorporated it. So I think the relationship, from what I can tell, is much better. The, this particular document, though, we didn't actually collaborate on the DPW or the senior center. So that's part of the reason I'm uncomfortable with it, because we actually haven't had any conversation about either one of those projects, other than individually calling people, ask questions about them, so.
Well, we did talk, we had Stephen to one of our meetings. That was part of what we were trying to do with the communication, was having him to one of our meetings, and then we discussed it as part of the joint meeting, too, which was helpful.
Yeah, but he just did a 15-minute presentation of DPW. I mean, and that was good, he came in, but-
Yeah, he answered our question.
It wasn't, we had no interaction with the board. It's not, and not their fault, it's not our role. That's, you know, they're, they're running those projects, which they should, that's their authority, not ours. But I get into, I think the relationship's gotten a lot better. I like the way we interact now. I just think that this is kind of beyond what we really need to do to make it any stronger. I mean, this is just, I'm going to go to the, you know, the town moderators' forums that she's doing, she's doing two on the DPW. I'm going to go to that as an individual, just to see, you know, why the costs are what they are. I think the location looks good. I still want to know more about the costs, but that's why they're doing the forums. So it's, but that, it's just, in my opinion, it's outside of our role. I mean, it's just not something a committee would normally vote on.
John.
Well, I support what you were saying, Madam Chairperson. Basically-
Justice fine.
Yes, definitely, well, all right. Just trying to build you up a bit.
Thanks, John. I feel that.
No, we do need collaboration, and we do need to sort of offer leadership, if you will-
Yeah.
-to the community. And it's true, as Russ points out, we know more about schools than we do about other buildings. But we are among the better-informed, I would argue, people in town, in that we're aware that when you propose something, you got to talk about budget, and you've got to start considering, you know, where it's going to go in town, and et cetera. So I like this resolution in that it's, it's an attempt to gather some forces and put some momentum behind a much-needed building program. And I've been in town since 1976, I've been teaching in the school system since '71. There's long been a need for a new DPW. Really, it's a mess down there. And the seniors have not been given much in the way of a building. They deserve something better, and this town can afford to do better. I like this resolution, except for four, five, and six, I dropped them, because all they do is repeat things we already know. Of course, we're going to try and bring it in at a fairly decent cost. We're not going to gold-plate the thing. And we're going to allow town residents to have input, et cetera. They're all going to be able to get out to town meeting. So I support this in general. I have the feeling it's probably not going to succeed past this committee, because I happen to like resolutions. I sponsored a number of them.
I like them, too.
And I think they're perfectly appropriate, but that's my opinion.
I do, too. I think they're perfectly appropriate.
It's for when you want to say something, but not do something.
Well, I think we should say and do.
Could we maybe make some changes? Would that be better?
We can, we certainly can make changes and send it back to the select board. I don't know how much we want to get into back and forth about it, but-
If we're going to do that, let's vote on the motion and then do another motion.
Well, what we can, sure, and what we could do is vote on the motion tonight, and then people could submit, I don't know if this is legit, but people could submit to me changes that they want to see, not legit, no.
We couldn't do that, but we could, I mean, if you want to make changes, I guess the motion would either have to be amended, or we just vote no on the motion, and then do another motion.
Okay.
I just, just my point is, as you said, you don't have any expertise at DPW facilities, but maybe if we made these things more general, in terms of just saying, we're supportive of your projects, and I hope you're supportive of ours with financial, with, I don't know, do you know what I mean? Like, just make it more general.
My objection isn't so much the language, it's just, I don't think it's, I'm just against the idea completely.
Oh, maybe.
So I appreciate you turning that far aside.
Well, I feel bad that the select board already signed it, and now we're like-
Well, the committee might still vote.
Well, they also approved our SOI as well, and our budget.
Right.
Stephanie.
So I was at the meeting where they approved this, too, and I think what Richard Foster said speaks to some of my beliefs, too, is that the resolution speaks to what we should be doing and what we are doing in collaborating. And, you know, he was against the resolution, I hope I'm speaking correctly, for what he said at that meeting, but that the resolution speaks for things that we should be doing. And it was more of a feel-good thing. I think he used the phrase, if I wanted to feel good, I'd go pet a puppy. So I think that a lot of this is, and I will say, as a first committee-year member, I have been really, I believe that we have been working well. Maybe it's because the budget season, the budget was somewhat uneventful, but it seems, I don't think there's any reason to believe that the school committee would put up a barrier to them going through with their projects. And I feel like that was kind of the genesis of this, is that they're concerned, we're going to get in their way, and we're concerned they're going to get in our way, where it really, there's nothing behind that, except maybe historically with the SOI, it has seemed like that, but that's their purview. I mean, they're there to either accept or reject. And for me, if the select board rejects an SOI and doesn't put it through, that's a signal that we probably don't have a lot of public support for it, and we need to work at that. And I think that's credit to the middle school working group that really brought us to the public's attention, and that's why it got through, whereas in the past, maybe that didn't happen. So for me, if the select board says no to something, it's more of a signal of, you know, did we raise enough awareness in the, in the public to bring that forward? So I would think the same would hold true with the DPW and the adult center. It's not so much that a committee's getting in the way, but, you know, I don't, I don't see that happening, I haven't seen that happening, and I feel like that was why this came to be, but that we really have worked, I think, collaboratively. So.
Anyone else before we vote on the motion? Well, we don't have a motion.
We did.
Yeah, we do.
We do have a motion? Okay, okay. Are we going to amend it, or are we going to vote on the motion on the floor? Okay. So.
We're going to hold on it.
We're going to, yeah, we're going to vote on the resolution, okay? All those in favor? Opposed? The passes.
There you go.
Wow.
Sorry. Took me a minute there.
Four, three, though.
Four, three, yeah.
One had to pass this year.
I think we all, I think we're all on the same page on it, it's just-
You know, school committees do resolutions, guys. They do them. All right. Next on our agenda is overnight field trip requests. Would somebody like to read the motions?
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approved the overnight field trip request for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to England, Ireland, and Wales, Mass. on April 15, 2017.
It's not Mass.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Wales, Massachusetts?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Any permission to go Wales, Mass?
I think it was a whale watch, so you're not- So just take the MA out.
So you're thinking whale watch?
Yeah. I was confused, just reading. I thought maybe there was a whales mass, I had heard of it.
It's a whale mass.
April 15th, 2017, through April 23, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I went on that trip in high school.
Acceptance of the donation. Can somebody read, Michelle, if you don't mind?
The Cub Scouts PAC 94 would like to donate the planting of a tree at Blueberry Hill School for the Arbor Day Ceremony on April 28. According to our policy, any donation which affects the building or grounds needs school committee approval. I move the school committee accept with genuine appreciation the donation of a tree planted at Blueberry Hill School from the Cub Scout PAC 94.
Second. Lovely, and thank you to Cub Scout PAC 94. A nice gesture. All those in favor? All right, do we have any, anything else on future agenda items, items before adjournment?
It's not a future agenda item. The, I forgot to mention this during the recognitions, but I think we should obviously, you know, offer sincere condolences to the family of Walter Coles, or Ward Coles, I'm sorry. You know, it was a major tragedy for this community and for our DPW, and I think our thoughts should be with their, with his family at this time.
Thank you for mentioning that, Michael.
I second that.
It was a real tragedy and a terrible loss for our community. Thank you for bringing that up.
All that talk of the DPW building, I remember.
It really, yeah. It would be nice if it was dedicated in some way, yeah. What motion, adjourn? Second, anyone? John? John made the second. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Diane. Thank you, Sue. Sure. For representing.
Sue, we don't even need her anymore.